Well, we held everything up for you.
I appreciate it.
It's almost scary, that ground, you know?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Cederewoolie Council meeting to order. My name is Mayor Julia Johnson, and will you please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to go through roll call real quick, like, even though I see all the council here, but for purpose of the minutes. Councilman Owen?
Present.
Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. I just want to say real quick, like, it's great to have a full house, and we also know that in about 20 minutes, it'll be completely dead in here, because everybody will get up and go. But I want to thank you for coming. We do have a couple wonderful presentations, and one of them is going to be the police officers' commendations. I'm looking forward to that. That's pretty exciting. But I also want to acknowledge Chief Tucker. This is his last official council meeting. He's been absolutely extraordinary, and I have to say that when I came on, the first time that I came on and took the gavel as mayor, he was the first to congratulate me and put out on Facebook that I was his new boss. It was very nice, thank you. Okay, we're council, we're going to move forward with the approval of the agenda, and there's just one modification, just to make you aware of that. We're going to be moving the annexation under unfinished business. It's actually number two, under unfinished business, up to the top. Is there any concerns regarding that? Okay, if not, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'm... I can move we pass the agenda?
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen, to move, to approve the consent agenda, items one through six. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. All right, so we get to present, or begin our presentations. First up is the Skagit Transit. It's the new route and youth free fare.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to the council members. I'm Brad Winler. I'm the Planning and Outreach Supervisor with Skagit Transit. I'm pleased to notify the citizens of Cederewoolie of our new youth fare free policy. This Washington State Legislature earlier this year enacted the Moving Ahead Washington Transportation Package, and as part of that, some additional funding came to transit agencies throughout Washington State. But it also mandated that with that money, all transit agencies had to be youth fare free for age 18 and under. So, Skagit Transit earlier this summer adopted that policy, so effective from here on out, youth in the city of Cederewoolie will be able to ride fare free throughout our entire system, and indeed on virtually all the transit systems in Washington State. And we have, it was a very timely change for us, because we do have some service changes coming up here in the fall for the city of Cederewoolie. It's been a big change. It's been in motion a number of years, and that is to give Cederewoolie finally its own dedicated bus. For the longest time, if you were a rider in Cederewoolie and you wanted to go from one side of town to the other, sometimes that was via Burlington, which was not always the best way to help folks get around Cederewoolie. So, what we've done is we've taken our Route 300 that had two buses assigned to it, that ran between Chuckanut Park and Ride and here into Cederewoolie, and we've split it into two routes. So if I could go to this first one, you know, it really was an inefficient schedule that we had. Oh, if we go to the first page, please? Thank you, sir. And we could serve a lot more areas with our new schedule. Under our old schedule, we had a 20-minute layover at the Job Corps area, where that was required for us, because we didn't have a bathroom facility that our drivers could get off the bus and use. Job Corps was not the greatest place for us to have that kind of a layover, because they only allowed our driver to get off the bus. So any rider that we had on the bus was held captive, for lack of a better term, while we had our little layover, and so the driver got a chance to use the restroom. We now have, if you drive by the Park and Ride facility, a new bathroom there that, with the easement that you guys approved in the consent agenda tonight, will be open here in the next couple of weeks. So with that, we were able to make the change, and that extra 20 minutes that we got allowed us to go and service new areas of Cederewoolie. We're also going to be introducing some real-time information out here. That's a picture of our kiosk that will be going in at the Cederewoolie Park and Ride here over the next couple of months. That has got a touchscreen to it, so users can go in, find out where our buses are, find out if we're on time or not. There are also ways with our new fare payment system through the UMO system, which is free. It's a downloadable app that people can get on their phones. They can also find real-time information out about our buses. So when it's January and it's raining, you don't need to sit out in the rain waiting on the bus anymore. You can check our system, you can watch our bus moving around, and when it gets close, then you can go out and catch the bus. Next slide, please. So our new route here in town will start at the Park and Ride. It will come into the downtown area on Ferry, come up on Puget to Northern, and then it will go up Metcalf. We'll have a stop here at City Hall. City Hall was one of the destinations that was not serviced under our old route. So citizens who wanted to come here to interact with the city for the various services you guys provide, that involved quite a walk for them, or a car ride. So then it visits North Cederewoolie. We still have service up Magaragle to Fruitdale, where we get up near Job Corps. We have been working with the Job Corps folks. They're aware of this change, and they're very happy with that we're going to be turning around in the roundabout instead of going into their facility. We will be installing, over the next few months, a shelter up there for their students to be able to wait to catch our bus, because it is quite a walk from where their barracks are and their dormitories are out to where our bus stop is. And they're aware, a lot of their clientele are going to be 18 when they show up, and so they will qualify for that free service. They anticipate getting, giving us some business. It comes down Fruitdale, and it'll serve the Helping Hands Food Bank, comes in on Wicker, and then downtown ship to Jameson to serve the south part of town. Services goes back up on Third, past the high school, makes a loop in the downtown area where it'll serve a number of facilities, the Senior Center, which previously wasn't served, the new IMCA facility for teens, that while it's closing for the summer here, next summer, it will be open, and we work with the Y on a number of campaigns throughout the county, and they're very excited that their youth that use their facility can ride us next year for free to get to and from their facility. So they, it's a, quite a relationship, beneficial relationship we have there. It then heads west on State Street, serves the new library for the city, and it goes all the way out on Cascade to Hodgkin Road by the McDonald's, where it serves the new apartment complexes. It'll serve Janiki Fields. There'll be a drop-off there for folks that want to go out, for student athletes, for others who may be going out for games before it goes up Trail Road and then back to our Park and Ride lot. So, we anticipate, oh, if I could get the next slide, please. We anticipate that, you know, this loop that we have here on the blow-up of the downtown area is going to be really beneficial for a lot of residents. We have a stop right in front of the Senior Center, so having hourly service at the Senior Center, we think is going to help a lot of folks get in there for the lunch, get in there for the social activities, and then be able to get home. So, you know, there's a lot, there's some really good coverage here in downtown Cederewoolie, and it provides a nice circulator getting around town. Next slide, please. And I was talking about our youth fare free. Again, I just want to emphasize that for the residents who may be attending or watching us online, that this is a permanent policy change for youth age 18 and under. So kids who want to participate in after-school activities, we've heard from a lot of athletic departments, actually, in various towns around the county, there's kids who don't participate in athletics, because they can't get away home, because their parents are still working when after-school practice ends. Now, you know, they're going to have that access through us. They, you know, a lot of kids have the smartphones out there, so they can download the UMO app. They know where they are. And it even includes walking directions in the UMO app. When you program in, you can program in predetermined locations, a friend's house, family member's house. So if somebody is out about town, they're not sure where they are, they need to find a safe place, they can go to our UMO app, they can hit one of those predetermined locations, and it'll give them walking and riding directions for how to get there. So it's a nice safety feature for parents out there, even if their kids aren't a regular user of the bus. So there's a lot out there, you know, that'll help with kids and their after-school activities, whether it's athletics, employment, or other activities. And with that, I yield to your questions.
All right. Are there any questions for Brad? Mr. Lavaca?
Yes. Thank you very much, Brad. I'm really excited about that, especially for, and for the town, too. How long do you think it'll take to do the loop from downtown and then back around through the, through the Swift Center, the Job Corps, and then back down to town?
The whole loop is designed to run in about an hour. So we've got it timed out at about 45 minutes right now, but we've been a little conservative with our planning, our schedule, because once you get users in it, then you find out how long it really takes. So if you look at our schedule right now, it shows with us with a really long layover at the Cederewoolie Park and Ride, but that'll get adjusted as we go through the years, and we find out how many folks are using it.
Awesome. Well, and also, the roundabout up at Job Corps, is that large enough for the bus to move around pretty easily, or?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep, we're taking it today. And then I should also note, too, for residents of Cederewoolie who want to go into Mount Vernon, we do have a new express route that started last fall, the 70X. It runs once every three hours between Concrete and Mount Vernon, but when it stops here, you can go from the Cederewoolie Park and Ride to downtown Mount Vernon in 21 minutes, which is pretty good. Under the old system, if you connect via, you know, the local routes, it takes you about an hour and 14 minutes. So this cuts a lot of time out, and it's timed to meet up with our Route 207, which runs to Walmart. So we can get you from downtown Cederewoolie to Walmart in about 43 minutes, which isn't all that much longer than a car.
That's right.
So.
Brad, will these new routes take any pressure off of paratransit?
No. Our paratransit will stay the same that it is. Our paratransit service is mandated under the Americans with Disabilities Act, that anybody with a mobility issue who cannot use our fixed route system, we will send a bus out to pick them up if they live within three-quarters of a mile of our fixed route system. This is available, and it has to be available anytime our fixed route service is in operation. So for Cederewoolie, that's seven days a week, they have access to this service. They can call in, make a reservation. It does require an eligibility process, so if you have a family member who is in need of mobility services, please have them call in, and we can get them all set up.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Um, Brad, I know that, sitting on the board, I know that there's discussion regarding the green energy, so electric buses, can you want to share maybe a little bit about that, the exploration that you have done, that SCAT has done?
Yes. So we're in the process of constructing a new headquarters facility out on Peterson Road by the Skagit Airport. We need that facility to be completed in order to have a location that has the room for the infrastructure for the charging facilities that are needed for buses. So that's our first step, is to get that facility up and running. We've done some preliminary work on that. We have some blank conduit, or empty conduit, that's getting laid into the ground, that's already built into our plans. We do have a grant from the state that we were awarded in June, that will allow us to bring a consultant onboard here in about another month, that is going to help us develop a zero emissions fleet transition plan, so we can transition our fixed route fleet, our paratransit fleet, and our van pool fleet over to zero emission vehicles. They're going to help us guide through what are the vehicle models that are out there, what different kinds of charging technology is out there. I mean, do you want to try to go on a single charge all day long? Do you want to operate with a smaller battery and maybe have chargers at your park and rides that kind of help top off your battery once in a while? So this is the things that the consultants are going to help us with, and also work with PSE, so that we can make sure that we can pull off the network.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you for hearing us out. I know that you've been working with us, with the city, but you've also been working with the county and the board. You've done some great work. Really appreciate all that you and everyone at Skagit Transit is doing. All right. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you all.
Okay, I believe Chief McElwraith, are you gonna, okay? We are going to be honored to see the commendations that are going to be happening with some of our officers. They've been doing some really good work, and you can take it from here.
Okay, I appreciate all the family members coming and trying to recognize any of the officers that do good work every day in our city. This is just a few acts that happened in 2021 that we're recognizing. They do so much good work, and so proud of them, honored to give them these awards. So you're going to see a lot of good things happening here. Sergeant Carroll is going to read the descriptions of what event is transpiring, to give you details of what happened and the deservingness of this award. So, knowing that, let's, let's bring the lifesaver awards up here.
We want Officer McGahey, Officer Foster, and Officer Wilson to come forward. So as they're walking up here. On 12/13/21, Cederewoolie officers responded to a report of a CPR in progress at the residence in the 1400 block of West Gateway Heights Loop in the city of Cederewoolie. Officers were advised of a male subject who was not breathing and was not conscious. Officers Harrison McGahey, Officer Kira Foster, and Officer Katie Wilson arrived at the residence and located the victim. After getting initial information from family on scene, Officer Foster administered Narlockson, or Narcan. Officer Wilson and Officer Foster moved the victim so they could perform CPR. Officer Wilson then administered Narcan. Officer Foster started chest compression and was relieved by Officer McGahey, who continued chest compressions. Officer Foster administered a third and fourth dose of Narcan. Officer McGahey continued chest compressions. About this time, the victim started to show signs of life. The subject started to breathe again, and Cederewoolie Fire Department staff found pulse on the victim. The victim was later transported for further treatment, but had regained consciousness before transport. So because their actions saved the life, they are being awarded the lifesaver award today. For those in the audience, these pins are to be worn on their class of uniforms, they're little badges that say, basically, lifesaver. One more round of applause. Next up, we have Detective McCombs. On July 21st of 2021, Cederewoolie officers were dispatched to a high-risk motor vehicle collision in the 2000 block of Hospital Drive. Officers were advised by dispatch that the vehicle had rolled over, and the driver was unconscious. Detective Austin McCombs responded to the location to assist. Upon arrival, officers initially could not locate the collision scene. Detective McCombs located the scene and found the driver still inside the vehicle and unconscious. With the assistance of an off-duty Cederewoolie Fire Department Lieutenant, Detective McCombs removed the driver from the vehicle. Detective McCombs began chest compressions on the driver. Further, Cederewoolie Fire Department staff arrived and provided rescue breaths from a bag and valve mask. Detective McCombs continued chest compressions until he was relieved by Cederewoolie Fire Department staff. The subject was later transported to receive further treatment. In preparation for the review of this incident, the family of the driver was contacted. The driver has requested to be part of any recognition. Detective McCombs receives this action, receives this award for his action taking this incident, because it saved a life. Officer Bass, please come forward. Officer Bass is receiving two awards this evening. The first one is the lifesaver award that occurred on the 3rd of December 2021, where Cederewoolie officers were dispatched to report of a medical complaint in 1000 block of Wicker Road. Officers were advised by dispatch that a 10-month-old infant was choking. Officer Bass responded to the location to assist. When Officer Bass arrived, he located this child still choking. Officer Bass performed the infant Heimlich maneuver on the baby. This action dislodged the obstruction, and the baby was able to breathe on their own. Cederewoolie Fire Department arrived and took over treatment of the child. For his actions today, Officer Bass is being awarded lifesaver. Furthermore, in a move unprecedented and not yet recognized in the Cederewoolie Police Department, we have developed the Baby Delivery Award, or the Stork Award. On November 24th of 2021, Cederewoolie officers were dispatched to report of a medical complaint at the 1800 block of SR 20. Officers were advised by dispatch that a woman on location was actively giving birth. Officer Seth Bass responded to the location to assist. When Officer Bass arrived, he located the woman in active labor. Using his EMT skills and training, Officer Bass evaluated the situation and took action. He assisted in coaching the woman through the process of delivering the baby. The baby and mother were taken by Cederewoolie Fire Department staff for further treatment. So today, he's awarded the stork. Next, I will have Officer Moore come forward. On December 6th of 2021, Cederewoolie officers were dispatched to report of a subject walking down the alley of the Hunter Block of Talcott Street carrying a shotgun. This is about a block north of Cederewoolie High School's gym parking lot. Cederewoolie officers were given a description of the male and his direction of travel. At this day of time, this time of day, high school was, has a large amount of pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Officer Brady Moore located the suspect walking in the area of West Jameson Street and Beatty Street. This is just west of the high school property. The male was carrying what appeared to be a long gun or shotgun loosely wrapped in paper. Officer Moore told the subject to stop. The subject said it was only a pellet gun and attempted to run away as Officer Moore, from Officer Moore, while still holding the firearm. Officer Moore chased the subject on foot. The subject turned on Officer Moore and swung the firearm like a club at Officer Moore. Officer Moore was able to deflect the blow and tackle the suspect. Officer Moore was able to secure the suspect into handcuffs, while the suspect continued to attempt to resist. The firearm was confirmed to be a functioning shotgun, and was found to be loaded. On the suspect, officers found multiple baggies of substances. The substances were suspected to be heroin, methamphetamine, and fentanyl. The suspect was identified as a 13-time convicted felon with convictions for attempted to elude police officer, resist residential burglary, theft of motor vehicle, illegal possession of a firearm, assault on an officer, and robbery. For his actions today, Officer Moore is being awarded a distinguished service. Can I have Officer Humbert and Officer Wilson come forward? Starting with Officer Humbert. On May 16th, 2021, Cederewoolie officers arrested a subject who needed to be medically cleared before booking into Skagit County Jail. Officer Katie Wilson was working as a field training officer for Officer Rachel Humbert. They transported the in custody of Skagit Valley Hospital ER for evaluation. While in the ER patient room with the in custody subject, both officers heard loud yelling coming from the hallway outside their patient room. Officers went into the hallway and observed the male subject exiting another patient room, with hospital staff following as he exited. The male obtained his belongings from the room and returned to the hallway. The male put his right hand into his sweatshirt pocket and manipulated the outside of his pocket with his left hand. He then drew a straight-blade knife approximately five inches in length. Officers heard the male state something like, "How about this?" The male pointed the blade towards nurses and doctors. Some of the staff were within arm's reach of the male holding the knife, while others were about six feet away. Both Officer Wilson and Officer Humbert intervened verbally, but were within about 15 feet of the male during the incident. After the incident was over, a doctor was interviewed, and he stated to Mount Vernon officers, he believed the subject was going to stab or cut him or another staff member. Both officers attempted to move to a location where they could intervene with their duty handgun, but were unable to find a location where no staff or bystanders behind the male. Officers believed that the subject was going to stab or cut one of the staff members. Officer Wilson continued to engage the male verbally, telling him to leave. While talking with Officer Wilson, the male moved from the location where he had multiple people he could assault within arm's reach, and started to walk towards the exit. During this time, the hospital was put into lockdown. Officers moved the male towards the exit door, which led to the lobby of the ER. Officer Wilson ordered Officer Humbert to stay with the in custody subject. Officer Humbert followed this direction and returned to the in custody, allowing Officer Wilson to stay with the subject male. The male was later taken into custody by Mount Vernon PD and charged with assault in second degree obstruction of law enforcement officer and felony harassment. For her part in this role, Officer Humbert is being awarded today with a distinguished service. Stand by. Again, unprecedented, at least in my career here. Today, you all have the privilege and honor of witnessing an award, the highest award we can bestow on an officer of this agency. This is the Medal of Valor, and for her actions, Officer Katie Wilson took to intervene in a absolutely lethal incident here at the hospital, with many innocents, including her training officer, she's been awarded the Medal of Valor.
I just want to say thank you, not only to the officers, but to the families, because without them, we wouldn't know the safety that we have within our community. We take it for granted, and, which is unfortunate that we do that, but we do do that. So will you please join me in standing again and thanking our officers for all they do? Thank you. Well, now, the rest of the meeting's going to be anticlimactic, isn't it? So, as they are moving out of the room, we are going to begin with city administrator report. So Charlie, if you will...
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. No report this evening.
All right. Moving on to council and mayor report. So Councilman Owen?
I don't have much. I just wanted to let you know that I had the opportunity to go up to Northern State, and, and I'm glad I went, because I met quite a few people that I worked with up there. There's not many of us left, but, and then I did get corralled and have to go in and, you know, give my, my little speech of what it was like then and what it's like now, and I enjoyed it, and I hope you go to the museums, you know, and they... I enjoyed it and I hope you go to the museums, you know, and they put, they got a lot of stuff in there, a lot of pictures and stuff and brings back old memories. I wanted to meet Brandon's mother, but our schedules didn't quite match up. She's a wonderful person. She's done a lot for the Northern State history.
Yes, she has. Recorded our history.
Yeah. It's a, it was a, it's quite an experience for me because I, seeing all those people, you know, I thought they were probably dead, but, but they're, some of them still kicking. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that it was, it was a great experience and I'm glad I went.
Very nice. Thank you for sharing. Councilman McGoffin?
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to tag on to that too. I think it was a good turnout and I appreciate the port and the museum and everyone that contributed to it. That's all I have for today.
All right. Councilwoman Diamond?
I don't have a whole lot really similar to things that have been brought up in the past. I've had constituents that are seeing a lot of speeding and really people racing up and down Ferry Street and State Street, so hoping we can put some speed traps or something out there to try to slow some people down. I personally witnessed a little girl crossing the street and a car coming through and almost hitting her earlier this week. So just to try to monitor that with the weather that we have, people getting excited and driving well over the 25 miles an hour there. And then the other thing is I continue to get bombarded with people very upset with high-density housing that is going in. Obviously, that's stuff that was put in place well before most people here on this council. However, it is my duty to bring forward what is presented to me and that is, is one of the things that's been brought up several times over the last two weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
I too have had people express concern about speeding, so I would love to see some speed traps in the area as well. And I know they're all gone now, but I just want to express my thanks to the police department and all their hard work and wonderful things they do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
On September 14th, I was hoping to be excused. I will be out of state and won't be able to make the meeting.
All right. Thank you for letting us know. Is there a motion to excuse Councilwoman Kestie for the 14th?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a wonderful vacation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where you go?
Councilman Allen?
Not much, Mayor, except I did get a deal on our council email and it was Jeremy and something and they were complaining about traffic on Jameson and Fourth. And I went to call them. They must have won the lottery because their number was disconnected or not in service and they didn't have an address in the phone, the P.O. box. So anyway, maybe Chief Tucker or Chief Dan will follow through on that. You probably have the same message. So anyway, I tried to call them, couldn't get a hold of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, good effort. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you. The theme is definitely safety. I did get a report that I emailed in from a person over by the high school that was woken up at night and the police were there to inform him that some kids were shooting at his car with paintballs. So when they walked him outside, he witnessed them washing his car under the supervision of the police in the middle of the night. And he just thought that was the coolest thing. So he's told every one of his friends about that righteous justice. So that was exciting. On that, we did see that, I mentioned last time, some speeding on State Street. I spoke with the individual. He did correct me and said that he was meaning Fidalgo or that he said Fidalgo and so Fidalgo Street was having some high traffic as well. I think we're seeing that throughout the community. As far as parks and recs go, we've been pretty busy on getting some action on some of the things we've been talking about. And so that looks really exciting about going forward and I've had a lot of positive feedback in all those areas. So that's what I got. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I thought Chief Tucker had left with everybody, but I wanted to give you a special shout out and thank you for all your years of service. Thank you.
All right. I think, should we applaud him? It really has been a joy working with you, Chief Tucker. It has. You're going to be missed, but I know you've got better days ahead. Don't be a stranger. You know where we all live.
My kid works here.
Yeah, there you are. So just a couple of things. First off, the, the hospital actually came together with a grant and they put out at Winnie Hauser Park a, what they call a Cedar Woolley Born Learning Trail. And it goes along the trail. It has, it talks about different things like ducks and trees and things like that. It's a wonderful opportunity for those of you who may have children out there if you want to visit the Winnie Hauser Park. So that's been completed and we thank Peace Health, United General for putting that into place. Also, just a reminder, so I don't know if this was actually put out to the council. I do know that it was put out to the, to the Planning Commission, but on September 7th, which is actually our next work session, we had planned to be with the Planning Commission, but that has been pushed off to the first work session in October. So our director, Mr. Coleman, is going to be unable to be there and I think it's important that he is there. So we're going to be meeting with them in October instead of September. So, but we still will have our September meeting and talking about other subjects at hand. Also want to make everybody aware that the Behavior Health Center right out here on Highway 20 by Live Care Center is having their grand opening tomorrow at 1 o'clock, ribbon cutting. And also the dedication for the Northern State Cemetery is going to be next Friday, I believe, September 1st, no, next Thursday, September 1st at 11:00 a.m. And I think, is that it? I think that is it. Charlie, I would like to make a request though. There was a lot of questions that were presented to the staff today. Do you want to give an overview regarding that? I do want to let the council know that all of those Q and As are going to be in your packet under the minutes. We have given them to Trina. So they'll be there for public record.
Yes, we received seven questions from Councilor Lavaca and I can cover those in detail, Mayor, if you'd like, or just give the high level, or we can work those through as we have policy discussions.
Yeah. See, I think it was on both Councilman McGoffin-
Yeah, we have others as well, yeah.
Yeah, as well as Lavaca.
Councilmember Burns, Councilmember Lavaca as well. Those are the ones that come to mind. I don't know if I missed anybody.
Is Councilman McGoffin?
Yeah.
Or you said Burns.
Yeah.
Okay. So would you like me to cover those questions?
Yeah, if you can just give the highlights of those.
Just trying to pull them out of my email here, my apologies. I had it pulled up and it closed itself. Okay, start with the initial seven questions from this morning. First one was talking about Exhibit B of the opioid agreement and asking questions about that. City attorney responded to that and basically provided a simplified version. I can read them in detail. I mean, this could take a while if you want me to go through them, I'll read them verbatim.
No, I think that it was just the idea of the questions and then maybe an overview.
Okay. And I may defer to some of the staff who are here because some of the staff wrote some of these answers. Unfortunately, the city attorney's not available tonight. We do have a stand-in for the city attorney this evening. But yeah, the simplified-
Earlier.
She's here.
Oh, you are there. My apologies, Nikki. Sorry, I couldn't see you out there. Would you like to cover that response that you provided on the opioid agreement?
So the question was about how the allocation was reached, the allocation distributions, what the formula was. And essentially what occurred is each county was provided a certain amount of money based on three factors. And then below that, the cities, the participating cities were also given allocations based on how much money they spent on the opioid epidemic. And so the question was about, well, why is Burlington eligible to receive more money? And the answer to that at a very basic level would, would be that they spent more money on the opioid epidemic than Cedar Woolley did.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a question for Nikki. Do we have any idea ballpark estimate of what the city will get from the settlement?
We don't know yet.
So it'll be, yeah, we don't know exactly. It depends on how many people sign off on the settlement agreement. It isn't a significant amount of money per year and it'll be over a 17-year period.
Right. Okay.
Okay, other, other questions? We got a question about the topic of the presentation that I'm doing at the ICMA conference. So I'm just going to read that title to you. The topic is Athenian Dialogue Partisan Divide: Why ICMA Members Must Be Political. It gets into the ICMA Code of Ethics and there was a question about whether I'd be willing to share more about that with council. I certainly would if there's interest from the council going forward. I see a few head nods, so if you want me to come back, I'm happy to do that. Don't feel obligated though. So let, let me know, maybe offline. I see some head nods, but not necessarily four that I can count. Okay. And then moving on down, has any of the other executive staff voiced interest in attending a conference? The, the answer is yes. Executive staff do attend state conferences and in the past, I understand there have been some who have attended national conferences, but not on a terribly regular basis. We are talking about doing more of that going forward, given how the community is growing, how the complexity of issues that we're dealing with continue to expand. And so you'll see some of that reflected in the 2324 budget. The specific budget that, that the question was asked about was the executive budget, which is just the mayor and I. There's sufficient money to cover the travel in there. For us, there's still additional money if there were something else that would come up, but we don't anticipate anything further this year. Okay, the next question, I'm going to turn over to Mark to cover on State Route 9, State Route 20.
So there's been a couple of questions from the public and I basically just copied one I'd sent out this morning to one, one of the parents who contacted us about the status of the intersection improvements at 20 and Township. And basically, it's a bit of a complex story, but the Department of Transportation required a specific traffic control plan to be prepared and submitted for the installation of the mast arms for the new signals that was not in the original specifications. It was kind of a late arrival, wasn't unreasonable for them to ask for it, but when they did, it, it did cause a lull in the work out there because they were to the point of doing that work when they, when they required that plan. And it took them about a week to review and approve that. That was approved Friday a week ago and we notified the contractor that they could start. They had rescheduled their subs, which were mainly doing the work at that point to where they were not available to start until today. They did resume work today. They are planning to install the mast arms tonight and wire them up and complete their work to complete the signals by Monday. What I don't know at this point is when they will be able to get their subcontractor back to do the concrete work, which is rather critical to finishing the intersection. But the signals themselves should be operational before school starts. I've directed the, the construction manager to work with a contractor to get the crossings ADA accessible. That means they're probably going to have to put a temporary pavement in if they're not able to pour the concrete prior to the 31st, which it doesn't look like they're going to be able to at this point. So that's the status of that and we're actively monitoring that and moving along as best we can. And I'll keep, the school district, we met with today and I told them these same things when we spoke earlier, what I knew at least, some of the information I just got this afternoon from a contractor. But we'll be receiving a detailed schedule from them to show when they're planning to finish this work and how they're planning to safely work with the city to move the pedestrian traffic and in particular students through the intersection in the case that they're not quite finished by school start on September 1st.
All right. Thank you.
The next question was regarding an annexation request and zoning. So John, I'm going to ask you to address that and maybe you can also address Councilmember Lavaca's question while you're, while you're at it.
So the question was, was about for the annexation request, could we get an overview of what the R5 allows during the meeting? And is it possible to change the zoning? And what would, and if so, what would the planning department recommend? So I think I'll address that when we get to my presentation and, which is the next, is coming up shortly. The other question was from Councilman Lavaca about the stormwater section updates in the comprehensive plan and some concern about changing the requirement for LID to be encouraged to required. And so to address that topic is, first, we're going to be talking about the comp plan again in the first full meeting in September because we backed it off of today's agenda because of the master fee schedule changes that just logistically made, made it problematic. So we'll be bringing that up in, at the next full meeting. And the answer to the question is that the, the changes are being made in response to our stormwater permit, or Phase 2 stormwater permit that the Department of Ecology, we have with the Department of Ecology. So per that, per that permit, we're required to say that LID is required if feasible. And so if, if storm, if LID, which is low-impact development type measures, so, so pervious pavement, bio swales, and basically infiltrating water, instead of having, you know, like controlled stormwater ponds or some of the, the older techniques, although LID techniques are really the oldest techniques, they're just engineered to be better for current standards. So the permit requires that we do have anybody that's doing a store, project with stormwater to do that, to study that first. And if the, if it's not feasible, then you could use the, the more engineering, non-LID type stuff. So that was the long and short of that one and we can talk about more, that more at the, when we get to this topic at the, at the next meeting. There was also a question about, I want to get down to it, about the Central Business District update, the design standard updates. Councilman Lavaca was interested in knowing if we had done any, like, direct outreach to any of the Central Business District, uh, business owners? And if not, could we? And so the answer is no, we didn't do any direct mailings or knocking on doors or anything like that. The typical way that code updates, comp plan updates, develop, any development regula updates are, is advertised on the city website and for, and planning commission agenda if we have, these are for legislative changes, so not, not things that directly affect like a specific parcel, but just overall affect the city. And so these legislative changes are advertised on the website. It is fairly incumbent on the community to pay attention to what's on the council and the planning commission agenda to know what's going on. When we have public hearings, we do know, we do have a notice of public hearing that's more specific about the project itself, that's posted on the website. And, and if there's any specific land involved, it goes to those properties. There is, you know, these are legislative changes, so again, they're citywide, they don't specifically address any one property, so there's no direct mailings in that sense. The planning commission is also expected to speak with the members of the, the public, just like the council does, about anything that's on the agenda. So, you know, they're, they're the, they're the people, the pulse of the public that, as they're making recommendations. So that's, that's kind of the outreach process that's typically done with a legislative use, update. And so then the specific question is, does- And so then the specific question is, does the council want to do anything more direct about notifying the City, the Central Business District business owners of possible changes to the design standards that would affect the Central Business District? And so that's really a council decision. We followed our usual and required notification process. So looking for direction from the council about, do we want to have any further public notice, or directed public notice on this? It is on the agenda today for the second read, so that would mean bumping it off of the agenda today and doing something that the council wanted to. If, or if you're comfortable just proceeding forward today, then we would just proceed forward with possible action on the Central Business District design updates.
Madam Mayor, if I may make a comment on that one? With the Central Business District, I know that it involves the entire city because all the city members are, take part in our Central Business District. However, it's a small amount of buildings within that Central Business District that get affected. And the thing that caught my eye when I was reading is that no one attended the public hearings. And so after the first one, I was curious as why we possibly didn't reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. So I did, and Monique said that she had not heard about it. So if somebody could reach out to maybe the Chamber of Commerce even, let them know that there's these changes taking place if it, in fact, didn't happen. Also, when I reached out to the businesses, they said that they had not heard of it. I had reached out to about a dozen businesses. They had not heard about it, but not all the owners were there as well. So, and that's only a fraction of, obviously, our Central Business District. I just feel like they should be in the room or around the table with ideas that they might have. If they're established, that really doesn't affect them unless they want to do a remodel, from my understanding, or if they're rebuilding, or if new businesses come in and they want to be here, then that'll kind of affect them. So people that own the land or the properties and just get their take and have a general conversation. That way, they're more on board with these changes for the city, not that they aren't already. But that was the idea. So it would be my recommendation to the council that we do send them a flyer to the packet and give them time to maybe read it and weigh in, if you guys feel that way. Thanks.
Okay.
I personally wanted to thank the Planning Commission on all of their hard work, because I've been following this for over a year now with everything that they've been doing, and I know that they have everybody's best interest at heart. So I would feel comfortable with moving forward with it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So was that a motion that you were making?
By me, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a second by Councilman Owen. So all those in favor of, yes, would you like a discussion?
So if we do go out to the businesses and they say, like, "No, we don't like any of this," does that mean it goes back to the Planning Commission for review? Or what's the next steps if we go this route?
Well, that's really up to the council. What we would envision if we were to go out to the public and go out, do a direct mailer, and then we could have, for example, a public hearing at the city council, so you can have the opportunity to hear from the business members. And then it'll be up to you whether you send it back to the city, to the Planning Commission, or if you continue to take action after the public hearing. That's one way you could go.
Do we have a way to send a flyer to all the businesses?
Well, we don't have, like, a clearinghouse of all the addresses now. So that would, that's one of the problems with, you know, like, a direct mailer, is we don't really know who to mail it to, short of, like, walking down the street and handing it, delivering it, or walking down the street and figuring out the address and owner of the business owner.
And there is any assurance, a lot of those businesses, a lot of the buildings are actually owned by people who don't live here at all. So that would mean that they would have to travel in for the hearing or write a letter.
Oh, Madam Mayor, you know, I personally, I would like to proceed with a little caution. I mean, bring it back, but, you know, the more input from the affected people.
So is the council wanting, then, as Director Coleman is asking here, is the council wanting to move forward?
Madam Mayor, I would, I'll personally go out and hand them to the businesses. They're just right down the road. I have no problem personally stopping by here and getting those flyers. After that, the ones who want to attend, they can, and it doesn't mean that what needs to change, changes, or their input is, we're basically voting to either send this back or to keep it at that final vote. So maybe they all are like, hey, we really like, which I heard feedback, they like the guidelines within the planning, but they also want, would like to be at the table. So that would be, I don't mind walking it down to them.
Okay. Councilman Kesty?
I feel that they have had that time and that it would be pushing us back out even further. So I would move forward with the actual second read and approving that, rather than going back in time.
Okay. Councilman Burns?
How often are these reviewed or revised?
Well, we can, we can update the design standards at any time. The last update, I think, was in 2018, and it wasn't a super major revision. This one's a little bit, little bit more to it than they were developed in 2005.
I think my opinion would be approving it personally and then sending it to these businesses, or allowing Councilman Lavaca to deliver it to them and see what they think of it. And if we get complaints, then we proceed accordingly.
Yeah, the idea wasn't to approve it and then me walk it down there. It was to do a flyer, letting them know that there are changes, and walking those changes and giving them an opportunity to come back. So my proposal is to table it for about a month, me to go out there, give them the flyers if that's what it takes, and then giving them opportunity to come to a meeting and give a discussion.
Well, you do, you do realize that the, that many of the business owners, that's, they don't own the building, and so they really don't have a say in this.
They're going in to do a remodel of a business, those changes would not apply to them if they're going to do a remodel within that building. Is that correct?
So these changes would be exterior, like, these are, these affect exterior changes. So interior, this, we don't have any regulations for what things look like inside, it's just the exterior of buildings.
So they're unable to do any modifications to the outside or to do that? I feel like, and we don't have to vote, I mean, there's a motion down that's seconded, but if we decide to vote it down and approve this, then that works out, too. I just don't feel comfortable when I read that nobody showed up to the public hearings and we didn't really do, and it's not our responsibility, and I think you did an excellent job, but we didn't take the initiative to go out and just reach out to them while that time was available. So I just, that caught my eye, and I think if we have an opportunity to reach to some of them, just to get their opinions, then that at least weighs in to the, to the motion as it moves forward. If people have changes on their buildings or requirements, or we have a firm city standard, then we also have the businesses that have weighed in, the owners of those businesses, the owners of the buildings.
Councilman McGoffin?
Is there any opportunity cost that would be lost if we postponed this two weeks or a month? I mean, if we, I'd be willing to help out, go talk to businesses, too, if that's something that, you know, we want to get more engagement before we make a decision. Do we stand to lose anything by waiting a month?
It's not like there's any contracts that the city has signed with anybody, there's nothing like that. This is just a legislative change. So I can't, aside from, you know, the cost of additional publication costs and, you know, the cost of flyers and whatnot, which should be pretty minimal, I don't foresee any actual cost to postponing, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so what I hear, then, is a motion that's on the table that's been seconded to postpone the current business at hand of the Central Business District design, which we haven't even got to yet on the, on our agenda, but to set it aside until Councilman Lavaca and Councilman McGoffin have a chance to take flyers downtown and disseminate them and talk to the business owners. All right? Yes, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So we have two opposed and five four. So we will set aside the Central Business District design standards and guidelines for now. And thank you, Mr. Coleman, for leading us through that process. Okay, so now I'm trying to remember how we even got to this place.
Mayor Johnson, we have three more questions that came in today. So that's how we got here, and we'll keep going. This is another one from Councilmember McGoffin, and it's sort of related to the conversation you just had. For the master fee schedule, there was previously some discussion about lowering the food vendor pricing, mobile vendors. I think that we're looking to promote, if we're looking to promote sporting events and parks, we need to seriously consider dropping the fees way down for mobile vendors to line up with other nearby cities. Is that a committee discussion or something we can talk about during the meeting? So when the council discussed this previously, there was discussion about, very similarly, which is why I just sequenced it right here, reaching out to the business community and making sure that the business community was aware of what we were looking at doing. So we are planning to do that in September, so that we laid out a process for that. We knew it was going to slow things down, and then to come back this fall to address that with council. Likely, the Business Development Committee first to kind of polish whatever feedback we've gotten, and then to the council. So that's the plan for that. Very analogous scenario. Thought it was a good one for here. One more from Councilmember McGoffin on council goals. He noted that there were three fire department vehicles being received as a part of the economic development goal. And you also may wonder, how is fire economic development? And one of the things we're looking to do is, we have three council goals, we're looking to tie the things that relate to those council goals as much as possible with either things we're already planning to do or things that we will do as a result of those council goals. So in terms of public safety, public safety is an essential part of economic development. One specific example of that is there's an ISO fire rating that's performed every four to five years for each city. That essentially determines how, what the quality of our fire response is in the city, and that ISO rating then determines what insurance rates people pay, businesses and residents pay within the city. So if you have the appropriate fire apparatus and they're reliable and a variety of other things, and your response times are good, in other words, short, you're going to have a higher rating, people are going to pay less on their insurance, that's going to make the city more attractive for business, besides just having basic services and all the rest that are important to people and people, when they want to invest in the community. So that's the tie to fire, and there are ties to police, and I expect there'll be ties to many of our departments, definitely to Mark's department. We just haven't gotten in there yet to add public works, projects, and things to the list. So that was the last one from Councilmember McGoffin, and then I've got one from Councilmember Burns that I need to put my finger on. It came in via text, and this was a question about, were any of the fee amounts actually changed in the master fee ordinance? Or is this simply to, is this basically looking to just simplify the code? And the answer is, we're looking to simplify the code, we're pulling the fees out of all the different locations in the code where they are and putting them in one place. That's why it's a master fee schedule, and the fees themselves are actually adjusted by the council through the budget process each year. So that's a whole different discussion in terms of what they specifically are. We're just pulling them in terms of what they actually already are in the code and putting them in one place. Those are the questions as I know them. If I missed one, my apologies. Please speak up.
Okay, so all those questions were received today. All those questions have been answered, and they are in your mail, and so you did receive them back, and some of them pertain to policy and some of them didn't. Okay, so thank you. So moving on to public comment, it is 7:03. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody either online or in the chamber here who would like to give public comment? An address, give you a name and address, please.
Pardon me?
Name and address.
1327 Railroad Avenue, Cedar Wully.
Thank you.
And I was wanting to wait until after the presentation on the annexing, because I believe that affects me, my property's right there, but I wanted to hear what it was all about first.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. I don't see anybody else online or in the chamber wanting to give public comment. It's 7:04, I'm going to close public comment. So we will move right into the continuation of the proposed annexation, and Mr. Coleman, I believe this is you?
All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. So the city received a request to begin the initiation, to initiate the annexation process from the Hopkey, fault, Hopkies and Salt families. The annexation process is laid out in state statutes, and so we follow those rules in this process. It's always a little archaic and a little different than the way cities normally behave. The first thing that it asks is, that requires, is that we have a meeting with the property, with the people that began the initiation request. So this is not an annexation petition, it's a step prior to the annex, to an annual, to an actual, actual annexation petition. So it just needs to be 10% of the property owners of an area petitioning to the city, in essence, asking, hey, we have land in the urban growth area, these are our properties, we're interested in coming into the city, so what do you think, City Council? And then the City Council has basically three decisions to make per state statute. One is, if the petition to annex is accepted, should the city accept, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation? And so that means is, you know, we received the Hopkey-Salt family petition, and on that map on page, I think, 200, it shows their properties outlined in red. So we can geographically modify that if we're interested in allowing an annexation. And also on that page, I showed the staff recommendation for adding a couple of other pieces of property to that annexation area, should it, should the council be interested in entertaining an annexation. And so you're not really making up your mind about whether or not you're going to annex this property, but you're saying, I'm interested in, we're interested in allowing this process to go forward and see if this is something that the city is really interested in. So this property in particular, as I said, there is a couple, there was two other pieces of property that we, that staff recommended come into the area, the annexation area, should the council entertain it. And that's because this property, the property as requested to be annexed isn't really adjacent to city limits. So what we would do is include a small piece of land that is unopened right-of-way, so it's really ours, it would be ours, it's kind of owned by the county currently, or because nobody used, there's no, it's unopened, it's just used by the adjacent neighbors. So that little strip of land, and then a piece of land to the west of that, that's owned by the parent of, Robert and Deborah parent, and their piece of property is a 1.45 acre triangle piece. So that, the map now is out that you can see, and this is also an aerial map. And as, if you, if you had the opportunity to look at this closely, the southern sliver of that entire area is really close to the floodplain. So as you know in Cedar Wully, the floodplain is down, kind of where the park is, and then there's, there's a pretty distinct little rise that goes all along the floodplain area, and that is roughly, partially in the, in the property that's proposed to be annexed. So a little bit of this sliver of these properties actually wouldn't be developable because they're right on the edge of the floodplain. This, the proposed area, as staff recommended, is all in total 16.8 acres. You said, if you, it's R five zone, and one of the things that Councilman McGoffin had asked is, what is, what does the R five zone mean? So the R five zone is our residential five neighborhood, it's eighty-four So the R5 zone is a residential five neighborhood, it's 8,400 square foot minimum lot size, unless you do a planned residential development, and then you can move those numbers around a little bit, under no, under no circumstances can it be less than, or more dense than five units per acre. And critical areas don't count towards that density, so we would exclude any area in that, in that critical area. So we would say, you know, if it's 18 point, or 16.8 acres, you know, just throwing out a number, maybe it's 15.5 acres available, and you multiply that times five and you see how many units it could be. If it's 16.8 acres at five units per acre, that'd be 84 maximum potential units, roughly 215 people. Knock that number back a little bit because part of it's in, in floodplain, so, you know, maybe 200 people or less if this were to be fully annexed. When we have the, the annexation initiator speak, their representative is, is online and available to answer any questions for you too. The intent of the family is, you know, they've owned this for a long time, and they wanted to get it annexed in, not because they have any imminent plans, but because, you know, it's the urban growth area, it's been intended to be included in the city as part of our planning for our future growth. This is, this is part of the area that the city's envisioned to be part of the city to accommodate our 20-year population growth. One of the things I also discussed in the email that's been given to the council is, because of the floodplains to the south, you know, no annexations in the future are ever going to happen south of there. Like, we've reached, this would be the very edge of the city. Similarly, to the east is ag, NRL, natural resource land, zoned by the county zoning, and so they won't let us put out that in the UGA even if we ever wanted to. So that's also a hard line there. So this would be the absolute southeast limit of city limits, period, for the very long foreseeable future. Again, getting back to the R5 zone, it's low-density residential, it's agricultural, like, low impact agriculture is allowed in that zone, so they'd be able to continue to farm the land. As you can see, there's two houses on the property now, and the rest is used for, for farm. What they farm out there, I don't know. I think it's changed over the years as I've, as I've watched it. You guys would know as well as I do, you know the area pretty well. And aside from that, it, you know, the next question is, so the first question was, if you allow the process to go through, would we, would the city geographically modify the proposed annexation area? Staff recommends that if you do, definitely include that parcel owned by the parent and family and the little piece of unopened right-of-way. Next question is, if the council determines that the city shall accept a petition to annex, should the city require simultaneous adoption of the proposed zoning regulation? So the proposed zoning is R5. That's its designation in our comprehensive plan. So when we designate our, our urban growth area, we designate it as a proposed zoning, and we use that to determine the density overall of the city. So I've talked about the land availability analysis that we do, so when we decide how big our urban growth area is, we don't only decide how big it is, in order to determine how many people that geographic area can hold, we also have to determine what the zoning is, and, you know, per each zoning, you can tell how many units are in there. So it's all mathematically balanced out to, to get to a certain point, to get to that projection. So it would come in as R5, and that's what staff recommends it would come in as, just because the areas to the, to the north of it are also R5, and the areas to the south and, and east are going to be ag. So it, it seems like a nice transition down to have the low-density housing in that area. If the council would, for any reason, want to see this area zoned something else, then we would go through the comprehensive plan update process to change the zoning of the area. We couldn't do it as part of the annexation process, so that would be a whole different process, the comp plan update process, which you're well familiar with, it takes about a year, sometimes longer. So hopefully that answered your question, Councilman McGoffin. And then the third question that the council will have to weigh in on is, if the council determines that the city shall accept a petition to annex, should the city require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness in the area to be annexed? And that's, that's kind of a no-brainer. So what that's saying is, you know, the city has all these bonds and levies and whatnot. When this area comes in, do we apply those bonds, levies and typical taxes to this area as well that we do to all of the other property in the city? And of course, we recommend yes, and that's always been the practice in the past. So it sounds like a weird question, and maybe doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's like, do we tax and apply our levies to this area the same as we do all the rest of the land in the city? Did I talk fast enough?
Okay. So there is somebody online?
Yes, Kristen Tuttle, who is the representative of the Hopkies and Salts is online. And so if you have any questions.
Hello, Kristen. This is Mayor Johnson. Is, would you like to share some information?
Well, you know, I think that Mr. Coleman did a really, really good job of covering our purpose. The most I can do is introduce myself, Kristen Tuttle. I am a representative to Virginia Salt and Delbert Hopkey, and I am with Tuttle Engineering and Management in Burlington as the representative. And really, I think that the biggest, the biggest point I want to be able to share is simply that, you know, their, their intent is to become annexed really more for the, because they're aging in place, and wanting to be able to benefit from all of the city services that are provided to the other, to the other residents that are within city limits, mostly having to do with their, their age. Does that make sense?
It does.
And I apologize, I want to just explain, I am, it's been quite a, quite a crazy couple of weeks. I am currently in San Diego, I'm here to watch my daughter receive a recognition this evening, which I think that I've already missed, so I'm feeling a little scatterbrained, I do apologize. But I did want to be here for this purpose with you guys, though, so.
Oh, we're really sorry about that. So are there any questions for Kristen regarding the annexation, the property by the council?
A motion to move forward with the annexation, or the proposal for the annexation.
Okay.
So we have three, three motions recommended that address the three requirements of the, of the state annexation laws. On page two of the memo, I apologize, I'm not sure what page that is, the overall packet.
Yeah, so is it, I have a question for you, John, is it actually, is it actually three or is it four? Because this, A starts out by saying, if the petition, if the petition to annex is accepted. So does the council first need to accept the position to annex the two properties adjacent to the city limits?
Well, there's, there's a motion for A, there's a motion for B, and there's a motion for C. So the first question is, you know, should the city accept, reject or geographically modify the proposed annexation? And staff then in bold has a recommendation to make a, make a motion to continue the proposed annexation process requested by the Hopkey and Salt families and geographically modify the annexation area to include the unopened right-of-way to the west and parcel P-77289, which is the parcel owned by the parent family.
Yeah, so I have the questions here in front of me, so, okay. I just want a clarification, because the way it begins, it sounds like we have to accept the annex first, it has to be accepted. So, okay, so we'll begin then with question, or with the first, which is A, and I believe that, Councilwoman Kestie?
I just have a question with this proposed annexation. The way that I was looking at the map, it didn't look like it was impeding on any other residents within it. Is that true, that it's just these lots and then their homes, no one else would have to be coming into the city limits without not wanting to be? Is that correct?
So there's no other, so the, the only homes are on, there's one on the Hopkey property, there's one on the Salt property, there is the, the property owned by the parents, and that's their last name, so I'm sorry if it's a little confusing. And we have not heard from, from them, but that is a slice of land that is currently farmed by the same person. Looking at an aerial map, it looks like it's farmed by the same person that is farming the, the Hopkey-Salt properties. So we have, we have not heard from that property owner, but it does not affect their home.
Okay. So any more questions? If not, we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca to move forward with accepting the petition to annex, and.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. So, Lavaca? Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so shall the city then accept a petition to annex? Should the city require the simultaneous adoption of the proposed zoning regulations, which is R5 zoning regulation? So do we have a motion?
Put a motion down to accept that R5.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that, remaining and keeping it as an R5.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the last, now that the council has determined that the city shall accept the petition to annex, should the city require the assumption of all or any portions of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed? Is there a motion?
I'll put a motion for, to add the taxes into that area as well.
Okay, to accept the petition, okay?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, second by Councilwoman Burns, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. So Kristen, we're sorry if you missed your daughter's presentation, but the council has accepted the annexation, and we extend our congratulations to the Salt and Hopkey family.
Well, I thank you so much. Thank you for having me here, and I'm just going to binge you here for one more second. I want to congratulate the City of Cedar Wully for helping to develop such outstanding police officers. We are huge advocates for law enforcement, and we truly appreciate everything that they are doing, have done, and I'm so proud of them. I'm not, I'm not somebody who lives in Cedar Wully, but I am very proud of what you have produced and, and the behavior of your officers, so thank you for that.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and Captain Michael Rith is also shaking his head as a thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Absolutely. And, and thank you too for trying to move me up on the agenda. We, we gave it our best shot, but it is, it's okay, it's, it's just fine. She'll, she'll have other shining moments. Thank you again so much.
Thank you, Kristen, for being so gracious. Good night.
Oh, absolutely. Good night.
All right, thank you, council. Moving on to item number three, the adoption of ordinance 201222, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code 8.16 to modify prohibitions on construction noise and create a variance process. And Nikki, this is you.
It is, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mark, for handling the first read of this when we had some technical difficulties last meeting. Before you, again, is ordinance 2012-22, which does make some minor tweaks to the noise nuisance code. It does modify the prohibitions on construction noise to provide for a variance process for circumstances where it might actually be preferable to provide a variance. The example given is when there's a very large piece of concrete that needs to be poured, and perhaps it's advantageous to start early in the morning. So this does provide a process for people to come in and ask for variances. It also adjusts the time slightly to require construction noise to stop at 6:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM. Again, this is second read, Mark handled it last time, and I'm sure did a fabulous job, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Nikki, has there been a lot of complaints with construction noise in the city around this?
Not necessarily with construction noise, with the exception of there's a gas station that is going in, that one has generated noise that I'm aware of. There could be more that I'm not aware of, but the only one that I'm aware of is, is the gas station going in. Mark would have a better understanding of what is happening beyond that.
We actually get very few complaints. Kelly hasn't been here long enough to really speak to it, but very few evening complaints. We don't really have that many contractors that choose to work at night. We do have one working tonight, it's an opportunity, I guess, to see. But in that particular case, the location dictated that it'd be done at night, and so, yeah. And DOT actually applied for a variation of our ordinance when they did their overlay work on Highway 20 and Highway 9 three years ago, and we really didn't get any complaints about that either. So this, the ordinance gives us more flexibility to do what we do, and we still have to approve that, so I'm fine with the revisions to that ordinance.
Okay. Councilwoman Kestie?
And they would be able to modify it if it's a, I mean, we don't get a lot of nice days here, and if it's something that they could be working into the evening, like before nine o'clock, they could get that extended if they needed to?
Yes, they could.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Ellen?
It's pretty much a case-by-case situation, though, right?
It is.
Any other questions?
Is it just changing it to, to change it then? I mean, what, what sparked the change to the amendment? Seems like we just amended the noise level.
Well, go ahead, Nikki.
Oh, okay, so what, what sparked the change is, I think, actually Washdaw again brought it up, and when we looked back at the code, we had left out a variance process. So essentially, this is just putting back in what we had before.
Right.
Or we're putting in a variation of what we had before.
That's my understanding of it.
I mean, I, I feel like, do we need to add it even? I don't know. If it wasn't in there and we're not receiving complaints, do we need to put more rules in if they're not, if it's not, it seems like something we can add in later, or if it becomes an issue where we're seeing complaints come?
Well, really, it, it's a tool that we need to have in the ordinance that's not there currently. It was dropped out due to some other changes we made, and so we're putting it back to give us the flexibility that we need here.
But the revision would be go from nine to six? So that would be the change, and then the six to seven minus amendments for, or submissions for approvals of concrete pours and stuff? Is that correct?
Nikki?
So, so we, we did make some minor changes to the timeframes within which you can conduct construction activity, but that wasn't really the point of this amendment. The point was to add in the variance process so that if contractors need to, they can come and say, hey, can, can we please start pouring earlier, or can we, can we please essentially violate the noise code under these particular circumstances? So it, it's an opportunity to technically let people violate the code for certain reasons.
Would we be able to keep the original times in this and then add it back into, so you still have the tool, but we don't modify the times?
So that is a, completely a council call on that. It seemed like nine o'clock was a fairly late time to be allowing construction noise, and, and that seemed like perhaps it warranted a tweak there. But it is, it is council's call, if it wants to leave construction noise acceptable until nine o'clock, that's, that's your call.
One last thing, on my opinion with that, council, is that if it wasn't a problem in the past, and why put further restrictions down unless it becomes a problem, in which case, we'll hear the complaints and be able to readdress it at that time. So if it's a tool you need. a tool you need, I'd say get the tool, but we don't need to restrict it further.
I'll say I think nine o'clock's a bit late. I don't disagree with Councilman Lavaca, though, that if we're not getting complaints about it, and I can't say, I hear a lot of people doing construction late in the evening, so it's probably not something that gets utilized very much anyway. But I'm not opposed to changing the time to eight or nine o'clock instead of 6:00 PM because I think that is an early cutoff for how late it's sunny. And we do have a short window of time where the weather is absolutely beautiful to be able to do certain things outside.
Any other comments or questions?
No. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2012-22, amending the old Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 8.16.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Owen, second by Councilman Allen to adopt 201222, amending the municipal code after 8.16 to modify provisions related to the construction noise and provide a noise variance request and appeal the process.
Is that with the time staying at nine, or would it be going to six?
It would be the time staying at nine.
Perfect.
Well, the, the ordinance as written changes it to six. So if there was going to be, so if the council wants to change what's written in the current ordinance, then, then you need to vote down this particular motion and move to amend the ordinance to remove the change to 6:00 PM.
So it, so the way that it's stated now, it says it needs to start, that it would be starting before 7:00 AM? It would be identified in the code, is that correct? And that construction noise should cease at 6:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM?
Except on the weekends, right?
Right. So, so if council just wants to make a motion to remove the changes to K-12?
Well, we have a motion on the table right now, and the motion accepts the, the ordinance the way that it is written. And the way that it is written, it says, "An example might include a construction project that needs to pour a large amount of concrete. In order to do so, it needs to start before 7:00 AM," time identified in the code. "The ordinance needs to create a variance and appeal process and make minor changes to the time when construction noise should cease, 6:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM," and adds "in additional governmental entities who are exempt from the construction noise prohibitions." So...
Sounds like we vote on it right now, vote it down if we don't want to, if we, if we want to change the times back to the original times and then re-put a motion on to keep the original times in that ordinance.
Exactly. So the way the motion stands now, it is written the way that it's been presented to you, and if you are in favor of the changes, then please signify by saying aye.
I think, can we clarify? On the weekends, Section 12 says you can go to nine, not to six. So if we're voting on whether or not to accept it with the hours, I think it's important to note that it's not just six. On the weekends, it says that you can go till nine.
Well, the, okay. Well, if everybody read that in the packet, yeah. So what, the motion right now is to accept it the way that it's written right now, and that's what you're voting on. So...
I just want to make sure everyone knows that there's some days that it could go later than six.
Yeah.
That would be off-peak working days, though. A lot of people don't, you know, at-home construction, but the standard stuff would be...
Okay, so we have a motion on the table right now that accepts it the way that it's written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Wait.
And opposed, same sign?
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. So...
Yeah, that got confusing because people were saying aye to a motion that wasn't... It sounded like you said to a motion to the way it's written right now.
The way that this, the way that this ordinance is written, that's what you're voting on?
Then mine is no.
So I am gonna go just down the line. So Councilman Owen, are you for the motion the way that it's written?
Yes.
Okay. McGoffin?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Burns?
No.
Kestie?
No.
Allen?
No.
Lavaca?
No.
Okay, motion does not pass. Is there amendment that you want to make to this?
Can we please make an amendment to keep the original times in the legacy document?
Okay. So to maintain the ordinance as it is now?
No, they need the tool for... I'm sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor. They need the tool for the, the noise ordinance, but keep the times as the original times before it was pulled out of the ordinance. So the ordinance would be, I think, I don't know what the exact times were, but it sounds like work from six to nine. Was that, I don't know what the, the times were before the change, the tweak to the ordinance we're trying to pass.
Okay. So, so Nikki?
The motion is to amend the ordinance to retain the original times in Section K-12.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So is there any discussion on this, or do we have a motion? And it would be a motion to amend the ordinance to retain the original times, K-12. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to make that amendment and approve this ordinance.
I'm sorry. Nikki, can you clarify what those times were?
I believe they were seven to nine, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Seven days a week, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Yes? Councilman Burns?
I've been saying that, until, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, weekdays, and 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM on weekends.
Right.
Okay. So we had a motion by Councilman Lavaca. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is there any more discussions or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so motion carries. And the motion is to amend the ordinance to retain original time, K-12, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And you said, what did you say the weekends were?
9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
And legal holidays.
Okay, okay. Okay. I don't know why that one was hard, but it was.
Mayor, it's actually still not finished. Unfortunately, you just voted to amend the ordinance, so now we need to vote on the amended ordinance.
All right. So now we're going to, do I have a motion to accept this amended ordinance?
I'll make the motion to accept the amended ordinance.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, moving on. All right, lodging tax, and I believe this is you, Kelly.
Yes, good evening. So lodging tax, also referred to as the hotel motel tax, is a tax on lodging charges or stays of less than 30 days and generally used for tourism promotion. And historically, the city offers this funding through grants. But any change in the process, which includes accepting grants, needs to go through the Lodging Tax Committee, which we're in the process of forming right now. So we need to form the 2022 Tax Committee for Spending in 2023. So really, what we're asking for today is just approval to send that information to the Lodging Tax Committee.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions for Kelly?
Is this a new committee that we're adding, or is it a committee amongst us that we're breaking up into?
It's a committee, the, the mayor's on the committee, and members that potentially would receive money, two members, which two people have already accepted, and then also two members of, like a hotel, like a hotel or campsite or Airbnb, something like that, are also on the committee. And it happens every, every year, traditionally kind of the same group of, group of individuals. So new committee every year, but similar to previous years.
So there's a committee that just every year goes through and helps the hotels and motels save a little bit of money during tourist season, or, or work the taxes?
The hotels pay taxes, and we use that money to promote tourism.
We've used it for the rodeo, we've used it for La Gua Rodeo, we've used it for the Chamber, I think the Tulip Festival.
People submit applications.
Just the two motels in Cedar Woolley?
Right. It, yeah.
As well as, it, it can be impacted by hotels, motels, housing rooms, private campsites, RV parks, and any similar facilities that people are staying at less than 30 days.
So is it a tax increase for them so that them, they can pay, to help, help pay for marketing in the town, in the community?
They, they pay a tax, just similar to any other tax they would pay. We collect it, and then we distribute it to grant applicants based on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation. So what we're requesting is that we just send that to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which we're forming right now, so they can make decisions on grant applicants, who's gonna receive the money from the hotels motel tax.
So it has nothing to do with the taxes they're collecting, it's how it's spent? That's what the committee's for?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there a question?
Motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the lodging tax changes referred to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilwoman Kestie, to refer potential changes to the 2022 use of the hotel motel tax revenues to the LTAC for review and comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the city council strategic goals. So, Mr. Bush, Charlie, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, council. So what you have before you at this point is an action item for the, the council goals that we've been discussing over the last several months. So you'll see that as Attachment 1 of this item, and you can, we can bring it back for a second touch. If we've got more iterations on this, absolutely no problem. But we've got it here for a first read. City's vision and mission statement are already set. The strategic goals are the goals that you've seen before, except we got a few comments at the last meeting, so we made some minor tweaks, I believe, to the first one to emphasize usage by residents and tourists. We had more of an emphasis on tourists, so we've balanced that out and really put that emphasis on residents. And the third bullet is, I believe, verbatim from what we had before. One thing we did do is split out, a couple of things I want to point out. One thing we did is split out the detail on these goals into departmental operating plans. And I can explain that a little bit more, I won't go into great detail, but what we're looking at is a strategic framework. We've been working with our intern, Richie Coleman, who's working on his Capstone project, and a big part of that Capstone project is trying to help us position the city with, we've got some major federal legislation, as you know, and one of those pieces is the Infrastructure Act that was approved, the IIJA, or the BIL, depending on which acronym you like. But that particular piece of legislation has a tremendous number of programs and a tremendous amount of money that could benefit the city in various areas for infrastructure projects. We've already found that it's really complex to apply for those, and Richie's been scouring that bill, looking at your strategic goals, and trying to figure out which programs amongst the hundreds, if not thousands, of programs that are in there are the best fit for Cedar Woolley and how we might best position ourselves with that bill. So a part of that process is breaking some things out into departmental operating plans, and it's also, for us, just, just a more helpful step because we're still working on this piece of it. A lot of this will get reflected in the budget, and we expect to have it finalized by the end of this year because this is a 23-24 plan directly tied to the budget. As you approve the budget, you'd be approving a lot of these items that have any kind of money attached to them. And the goal would be to bring this operating plan back to you every quarter for an update. So this is really where all the details reside. The goals in here are exactly the same goals you see on the previous page, but there'll be a lot more. As you can see, fire has weighed in, but we've got more to come from other departments that will add to this, to really align things. And we can continue to take feedback from council and bring this to you and, as, as you wish, and we'd like to get it as dialed in as we can by the end of the year. But a lot of it would be reflected in the budget. So back to the, the actual strategic plan. The one other piece of this, Richie's recommendation, we extended it to a five-year plan from a two-year plan. And the reason for that is strategic with the federal government and applying for grants. To have a five-year strategic plan, it actually aligns with the expenditure of the funds in the IIJA. So it's beneficial to us to be able to point back to our strategic plan and gain additional grant points, essentially. That doesn't mean you're locked in for five years, you'd be locking in a future council. You obviously can't do that. The goal, or the intent here is to, to look at this, review this every year. Council can change goals every year at that point or at any time that you really want as a group. So what I'm asking for tonight or in the future is for action on Attachment 1, which is the three goals that the council identified, so we can get those locked in and continue to work on the rest of it.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question. Is there a way to tighten up the way, like the three fire trucks, folding that into the economic section seems like a bit of a leap, more than just saying it's economically sound to improve safety within the community, and then keeping that itself? But folding in so many or jumping, you know, it seems like we're, we're leaping at things, we're really grasping at the air to try and pull things into the, to the strategic plan. Safety was on the sticky notes, it was, it was part of one of the things, and it didn't become the top. So although it is important, especially with the economic structure of the community, does that, does that make any sense?
I think so. I guess from that perspective, that's something already in our plans. We're gonna make those purchases regardless. They, they don't necessarily have to show up here, but one thing that's helpful for us organizationally is where it makes sense, is to try to align all of our departments as much as we can with that thinking about the council's goals and where you want to go. So I do want the fire department thinking about economic development because, sure, buying fire engines is pretty straightforward, but when we're thinking about the parks goal, for example, maybe we can offer additional safety equipment in our parks to make those parks safer for anybody who's there, and maybe the result of that is enhance park usage. It's just another element of being in Cedar Woolley. So I want the fire department to start thinking that way. Same thing with the police department. I want them to look at the world from the lens of your goals as one of our lenses. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that we, we list fire engines in here and police vehicles. I would be fine removing that. I do want to respect the fire department putting it in there, but I can go talk with, with the chief about that.
I think you clarified that very clearly for me. So those are the lenses of which they're gonna focus their, their input from. So when they're asked, how do, how, what you're doing, meeting these goals, they're saying, "Well, we got these three fire trucks and this is why, and we feel it would fit under this strategic plan." It's not actually... And that does help in a way of seeing where they're coming from or what they feel is economically sound, or towards recreation in parks, or towards growth, and, and kind of see where they're weighing in. But it's not necessarily relating to, hey, we're, we're got economic growth, see, we bought three fire trucks. I see that. Thank you very much for clarifying.
Okay. Any other questions for Charlie? Okay, this is the first read, so we'll bring it back to you, probably on the 14th of September. And then the last item tonight, and I believe this is Nikki's, and it has to do with the adopt, adopt ordinance of 201322, removing fees from the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, and also adopt Resolution 109922, establishing the master fee schedule attached as Exhibit A. So again, first read. Nikki?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, even though this is a first read, I am asking for action tonight.
Okay.
This one did get pushed back from the last meeting, and from a timing perspective, it is important that we get this one moved forward because we've got a lot of things coming behind it that are going to trigger some amendments.
Okay, so are you looking for, are you looking for adoption of both the ordinance, both the ordinance and the resolution?
Yes, ma'am, I sure am.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
So this is something that we've been working on for a very long time and something that I know a lot of us are very excited about. What it does is it removes all of the fees from the Cedar Woolley from the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code and places them into a master fee schedule. So, by Ordinance 2013, you're taking those fees out, and by Resolution 1099, you're putting it into a consolidated fee schedule. And what that does is that creates a structure that can be easily amended from year to year, and it's much more accessible both to the public and to staff. As I said, this one is kind of important to get passed tonight, because we have multiple things coming behind it that are affected by it. We do have updates to the cemetery code that we are going to be looking for changes to that fee schedule. We've got comp plan amendments that are also looking for some changes to fees. We have a rewrite to the solid waste code, which again is looking for some changes. We also have some updates to the public records schedule. And so, all of those things actually require the structure to be in place first before we can go and make substantive changes. This particular action or set of actions today isn't making substantive changes. It's just creating the structure so that we can move forward with making some substantive changes in the future. So, hopefully you all have had an opportunity to take a look at a little work that's been done here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, I'm looking for two motions, the first to adopt Ordinance 2013-22, and the second to adopt Resolution 1099-22.
All right, thank you, Nikki. I know you've been working on this for over a year. This has really been a process, so thank you for the work that you've done on this. So, council, do you have any questions or comments for Nikki?
Nikki, are we, and it might be one for maybe Charlie or the mayor, there's things within that fee schedule that seem off, and it would be a different time to do that. But that's when you guys would bring that, such as like, I would almost, we talked about the food vendor going down from 1,000. We noticed that the, or I noticed that the pot shops were at 250. We probably could increase them, they seem pretty profitable. But are there any changes within the plan you just talked about that decrease fees? Or are the changes increases to fees? Or how do those changes make sense? And I know that's, that might not even relate to this, and if it doesn't, let me know, and I do understand where you're coming from.
So, I don't have an actual answer for you about what the future amendments do. I just know that there are changes, and that there are additions to certain fee schedules, because there's some big code rewrites that are coming forward. So, there may be things that aren't even addressed yet in the code. This particular set of actions doesn't make any changes up or down to the amounts. It just puts them in a single location and creates that structure.
So, we're simply moving it out of the ordinance into the resolution?
Correct.
Yeah. So, if, if you're interested, there is a motion, it would be the first motion, and that would be to adopt the Ordinance 2013-22, which removes the fees from the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. And after doing that, then we would look for you to adopt Resolution 109922, establishing the master fee schedule attached in Exhibit A, and those fees would be transferred into that or located in that. So, any more questions or concerns, and if not, I'm looking for a motion.
First, I'd like to say thank you, Nikki, for going through the trouble. This is a very logical step, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2013-22.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to adopt Ordinance 2013-22, removing the fees from the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. Having done that, we are looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 109922. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Lavaca, to adopt Resolution 109922, establishing the master fee schedule attached as Exhibit A. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It carries. Excellent, okay. Anything else, Nikki, or is that it?
So, I will just let you know that the first amendment to the master fee schedule, so now we're no longer going to be working in code, we'll just be working in that fee schedule, and we'll be amending by resolution, and the first one that you will see will come forward with John's comp plan amendments. So, more to come.
Excellent. Thank you again. Okay, and that is it for us tonight. Is there anything for the good of the order? If not, thank you, and I will see you September 7th at 6:00 PM when we have our work session. We are now adjourned.